We will have the invocation and pledge by Travis Reader.
Let us pray. Your heavenly Father, thank you once again for waking us up this morning. Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight to make decisions for the county that's hopefully in the best interest of the county. Continue blessing us as we go through all the difficulty of COVID, we go through the flu season, and we go through the presidential election. Your heavenly Father, continue to bless us for all the things that you are doing. Bless all the candidates that are running this year. Bless them that they may have traveling mercy throughout the day and throughout the night up until the event. Your heavenly Father, bless you. Continue to pray for us and continue to keep us these blessings. We ask in your holy name. Amen.
I do it to comply for the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank all of you for being here tonight. Those of you who are watching it live streaming, we appreciate you being a participant in also. Item number one, adoption of consent agenda. Do we have a motion to adopt this consent agenda? A motion by Mr. Coon, second by Johnny McScurry. All in favor? It is you now. Any additions or deletions to the current agenda? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented? Motion by Mr. Reader, second by Mr. Scurry. All in favor? It is you now. Personal appearances. Update on sheriff's department staffing. The fabulous, outstanding sheriff, Newberry County, Lee Foster.
Thank y'all so much for allowing me to take a little bit of your time up. But a year ago, we had a pretty serious situation going on with law enforcement in the county, particularly with the sheriff's office. So I'm here to talk with you tonight about how the problem of poaching had recently been costly and dangerous to our taxpayers. And I'm not talking about poaching a wild game or hunting. I'm talking about poaching a law enforcement officer. Law enforcement officers are a rich commodity right now. Last year at this time, we were losing deputies at an unprecedented rate. We were training them and giving them valuable experience at taxpayers' expense, and then other agencies would come in and recruit them away using incentive packages and better pay. And it was real easy for them to do in this environment. We lost deputies to Lexington County, the city of Ermo, the Criminal Justice Academy, State Transport Police, the Attorney General's Office, and even to the city of Newberry. Every one of the deputies we lost were seasoned veterans, and in many cases, they had had extensive advanced training, and this was paid with Newberry County tax dollars. And these were people that we counted on, and they were poached away from us. The disadvantage in Newberry County was that we had to find new deputies to replace them, and we did not pay enough or have an incentive package enough to attract certified officers from other agencies. As they were leaving us, we could not replace them with certified officers. So that made us hire people that had no experience and no certification or license, and that's an uphill battle. We were also having trouble attracting even non-licensed police officers because of the industries that we have here that were paying so much better. And we also were having to fight the growing perception that has been going around during the social unrest in many of our nation's cities about law enforcement is a disvalued profession. And sometimes the national media appears to participate in this as well. And also, time about this is not on our side. And I'll explain this a little bit in detail if you will allow me. When you hire a recruit that has no training and experience to become a law enforcement officer, getting them ready to protect the citizen is a very long and drawn out process. The pre-employment routine is educational testing, psychological testing, physical agility testing, and a very deep background investigation, and that takes several weeks. Once a prospective officer is cleared for hiring, they must be employed by a public body. And that's important. They have to be employed by a public body before you can start the next phase of training, which is getting the certification and license. During that time, it took up to 10 months to get somebody into the academy. Now, as a side note, I say the academy has done a remarkable job and has changed the way that they have recruit training. So it's faster now, but at the time, it took up to 10 months to even get a candidate into the law enforcement academy. And you remember, I said, we had to pay them. We had to hire them before they could go to the academy. So that's 10 months that a person was awaiting training, and we were having to pay them, and they couldn't perform any law enforcement duties. So we had them working, but it wasn't productive work. I can promise you that. They had to go to 12 weeks of in-house training at the Police Academy in Columbia, and that's not over with after they graduate. They can't just go start patrolling like we did back in the day. You're required to spend up to 10 weeks in field training with a field training officer being observed and ensuring that you're capable of becoming a full-time deputy. With all that said and done, we have needed well over a year to replace an experienced officer with a newly trained one. And don't forget the fact that we had to buy them the equipment too, and they had that expensive equipment. This all points to the false economy of low wages for law enforcement officers. The training dollars and the time we invest in these officers is tremendous, not to mention all of the equipment purchased. We do not even have a new, wet behind the ears law enforcement officer until that investment is made. Then we lose them to higher-paying agencies, and as soon as they gain a year or so experience or get advanced certification, those agencies come looking. And I tell you, they do it in unique ways. They came looking in unique ways. What we were forced to do was wait more than a year for those highly-trained replacements. Had to pay overtime wages to the deputies that were certified so that we could provide adequate time. We made a commitment that we were not gonna let people wait long times for law enforcement, so we had to staff the field. The losses in safety, staffing, and experience and tax dollars add up in the system, and it just repeated itself. Last November, beginning actually in October and last November, this problem had gotten real severe. Our senior staff came to the County Council Public Safety and Courts Committee and vented our frustrations because it was getting desperate. The most I actually thought and expected was for them to listen and let me get it off my chest. But instead, Dr. Harriet Rucker, Mr. Kirksey Coon, and Mr. Johnny McScurry, members of the Public Safety Committee, they dug in to the problem. They looked into the problem themselves, not just taking what I said. And they began working on a solution. They put my staff and administrative staff through their paces, insisting on detailed answers. Then they demanded a detailed solution, and I'm talking about an actual solution, not something that was just winded dressing. They even took time to speak with some of the officers to get their feelings about what was going on and why we were in the situation. Not just taking my word for it, which was just, it was fine. The plan they came up with raised the salaries up and down the line, and please let me emphasize this. That was for the boots on the ground. That salary was not for me or our senior staff. This plan did not cover them. It raised pay for our officers up to where we met the regional minimum and exceeded that. We were now competitive or better than a lot of the agencies in the area. And we didn't raise this slowly through annual 2% cost of living increases, which we weren't keeping up with, the Joneses. Instead, we got action and we got real solutions. And we desperately needed one because we were having a hard time providing coverage in the field for answering calls. And it has gotten very dangerous out here. Newberry is blessed. We're not as dangerous as some areas in the state, but it is still dangerous here in Newberry. And officers were having to answer very violent calls by themselves and had waited a long time for backup. So we came up with the county council with some real-time solutions, and it has worked. And I'm here to tell you tonight, and this is the reason I'm here, it has worked. At the time when we presented our case, we were in the area of nine deputies down. Now, if you take our staffing requirements, nine deputies equated to two shifts of police officers, of deputy sheriffs. We were nine sheriffs down, sheriff's deputies down. Now, that doesn't sound like a lot. We're talking about nine looking at great numbers. But nine deputies, that's a lot for Newberry County. Newberry County is 636 square miles. And we do a lot of coverage for the Highway Patrol who have changed their mission. And it's like a lot of other things with county government, it gets pushed down on us. We're the lowest level, so they push it all down on us. So that added to our problems. So we were down nine deputies at the time. And today, I'm here to tell you, we're essentially full staff in the law enforcement division, the call answers. The morale among our officers is extremely high, where it was low. And it's even high considering what we're going through in the public eye and the media's eye. It's really high. They're upbeat, and they want to work. Our pay is competitive with the larger agencies that were robbing us and even the smaller agencies that were robbing us. The plan that the Public Safety and Court Committee came up with, and that was with full council's approval, has made Newberry County a much safer place and one where the law enforcement officers want to work and where the law enforcement officers are better protected. And we've solved the poaching problem. In fact, we're kind of doing some of the poaching ourselves now, shoes on the other foot. Since the pay plan has gone into effect, we've been able to hire certified officers to replace them. We've attracted three of the officers that left us for higher pay. They came home, and they're happier here than they were there because the grass is only greener on the other side of the fence if it's a septic tank there. And the officers are happy. They're not leaving the agency like they did. The only people that have left in the last several months are those that have reached retirement age, and they moved on and retired. The last person we lost was to the Criminal Justice Academy, and that was before we went through this pay plan. Since that time, we haven't lost anybody except to retirement. We only have one opening, and that is due to the retirement of one of the deputies that worked in the courthouse, and that position is in the process of being filled right now. And she retired after a good long trip. So, on behalf of the Newberry County Sheriff's Office, on behalf of the deputies that worked to protect this community every day, every night, 24/7, we've been wading through the COVID, hadn't taken a break. We want to thank y'all, and we want to thank you from the bottom of our hearts. We know that was not an easy thing to do, but sometimes the right thing to do is not often the easy thing to do. And we appreciate it. And it started out in the Public Safety Committee. Appreciate Dr. Rucker, Mr. Scurry, Mr. Coon for initiating and working with it. And then we appreciate all other members of council that got behind the program. And we appreciate Mr. Adams and Mr. Adams' staff to do a remarkable job in finding ways that we could do this and not increase the burden on the taxpayer. And with that, I thank you, and I'd like to any questions anybody have.
Comments, questions?
Well, I think one thing we need to say is that Sheriff, that is in council, is that our plan is to continue this and such that we keep it updated. And we appreciate everything that y'all are doing, and thank you with all our hearts for the constancy of our sheriff's department.
Mr. Chairman. Sheriff, myself and Johnny McScurry have worked alongside you in law enforcement for many, many years before the two of us retired, and we know what our officers face, especially in today's times. And we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for continuing to do what we started years ago. Thank you.
Just so y'all know, it's not the same job when we start. It's not the same thing, and it's, I tell you, it's really tough on us to do this work, to see the, trying to think of the right words, the whipping we've been taking, which, you know, we need to improve, and we are improving. And y'all have helped that, believe me. The actions y'all have taken has helped do that because you get better trained, better interested, better committed law enforcement officers and law enforcement officers that are interested in their community. And you're allowing people that, like, well, I didn't get a part of that money, and Ben didn't get a part of that money, but the other officer, everybody we hire has some commitment or some connection here to Newberry County, and that makes them even more committed. And I tell you, you know, when you see things on television, it demoralizes you. When you get painted by a broad brush, you get really upset and demoralized. But our folks, y'all helped, and it makes it worthwhile. And I think we're doing, I'm not gonna brag, and it's not about me. It's about the staff out there. I think we're doing a really good job, and we continue to improve. We just went through several hours of training on crisis intervention and de-escalation. We're gonna be doing more training on all of that in the near future. So again, I thank y'all, and I thank you for the interest. And I'm telling you, this helped make law enforcement better here. If you got good law enforcement, you got a good community. If you got a safe community, people want to live here.
Right. I just like the fact that when I go out of town, I hear people say, "Y'all better be careful when you come through Newberry County." I do appreciate hearing that when I'm out of town.
Lee, I'd just like to say, you know, it is very much appalling on a national and even state level when you hear people talking about defunding police, when you're talking about the escalation of the stuff that they're having to deal with. And again, as we as a council, and we went to depart committees back, how many years ago? 10, 12? Somewhere along in there. And I just want to say, I think this is a case where committees, again, shows that it works. When the committee of Dr. Rucker, Mr. Coon, Rob Scurry got together, and again, it shows their ability to team build with the rest of the council to help make sure that it's passed. Of course, I don't think there was really much opposition to it, but the team building opportunity there to guide and lead council to where it is. Again, the administrative staff that fell in line and put it all together to truly put the numbers together to make it work. I don't know that there can be enough thanks that goes around, and I know we cannot thank your staff, your guys, your girls, all of those people out there in the midst of all the trials and tribulations that they're faced with. Now, I don't know that we can put enough money behind it to make it as rewarding as we should to them, but we do our best. And again, when you look at how media has just been humiliating, I guess, to law enforcement, I just want to say thanks to our local media who really portrays our community and our law enforcement in a very positive nature. Never seen where it's been torn down by our local media. Of course, honestly, I don't think y'all have given them opportunity to tear it down because if not, poor Andrew would be intimidated and influx of people if it were something there that y'all had done. But again, thank you for being the leader of your group and keeping everything above board. Our law enforcement is extremely important to the safety and well-being of our community currently and in the future because if you ever let that cancer get started in your community, you got heck to pay down the road. So again, thanks for all y'all do. Thanks to the committee for studying it, instigating, and bringing it before full council. Again, Rob Scurry, Dr. Rucker, Kirksey, we appreciate the efforts that were made to bring it before full council. Anybody else want to say anything?
Sheriff, we just want to thank you personally for y'all's well done. And I always tell you, you make about eight dollars an hour. You worked all night and half of the day, so I don't know when you sleep, Sheriff. Like, you're gonna radio still running. Rescue calls, fire calls, and all of us, our tow calls, and I'm actually stowed out a little bit. You're dedicated. I would help Ben. I always tell you, you're gonna be another strong father. But God bless you, hang in there, and keep our county safe. Thank you.
I think we bless his wife.
Yes, Scurry, we can say that he gets enough rest, but obviously, he's missed out on the beauty rest.
And I agree with you on that. And the last thing I'd like to say, again, I want to thank y'all. And we are not perfect. We never claimed to be perfect. We've got our problems in our community, but I can tell you, as Mr. Reader said, and I'm in constant contact with my colleagues, our 46 sheriffs, I'm in contact with them most of all the time. No disrespect to any of them, but we are sure in a lot better shape than some of the counties and most of the counties, and especially the counties our size, we're in great shape. And the last thing is, please keep Mr. Larry DeHart in your prayers. His help is not good. And as I said, Larry's a great volunteer that responded to a lot of things, fires, rescue, anything. And he came here a lot because he was interested in his community. So if y'all don't mind joining me in prayer for him and his family. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lee. And again, this is one that we'll chalk up in the win column for county council, for the county as a whole, this whole thing of being able to recruit and keep officers. So again, thank y'all. Item number four, ordinance number 082120, an ordinance to declare surplus and approve the sale and transfer of a portion of certain real estate property owned by Newberry County. This is the public hearing. Do we have a motion to speak as public here? Motion by Mr. Reader, second by Mr. Scurry. Anybody from the public to speak pro or con? Okay, hearing none. I'll declare public hearing closed. Mr. Adams, this is third reading. Do you want to address the ordinance?
This ordinance contemplates the sale of approximately five acres of county property to the owners of Wilson Tractor. It's a business located on Wilson Road in Newberry. The property involved is situated directly across the road, across Wilson Road from Wilson Tractor. The property involved is situated directly across Wilson Road from Wilson Tractor and is a portion of tax map parcel number 399-39. The negotiated selling price for the property is $20,000. The two parts of the property to be conveyed are intervened by a small roadside park believed to have been constructed by the Civilian Conservation Corps. The county would retain this portion of the property. As part of the consideration for this transaction, the prospective buyers have optioned the county for purchase 192.45 acres of property under their ownership. The property is comprised of tax map parcels 345-14 and 345-3 and is located on Highway 34 bypass. The county is marketing this property as an industrial site. We have begun the due diligence testing on this property, and it has been made part of a Duke Energy Site Readiness Program. Duke will pay for most of the due diligence testing, which is about $60,000.
All right, you've heard the explanation from the county administrator. This is third reading. Do we have a motion to speak the third reading? Motion by Mr. Coon, second by Mr. Scurry. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? It is unanimous. Item number five, ordinance number 1022-20, an ordinance to declare surplus and approve the transfer of a portion of certain real estate property owned by Newberry County. This is the first reading. Mr. Adams?
Mr. Chairman, this ordinance contemplates conveying to the town of Prosperity at no cost or nominal cost. A property is approximately 0.03 acres, or 1,400 square feet in size, and which lies partially within the railroad right-of-way. The location is near the intersection of McNary and DeWalt Streets in Prosperity and is marked by the presence of a very small building, which is owned by Beedenbaugh, who has a ground lease with Newberry County. Beedenbaugh wants to give the building to the town of Prosperity, giving the underlying property to Prosperity would unify the ownership of the land and the building situated on it, and this property is of no practical use to Newberry County.
All right, we've heard the explanation. This is the first reading. Do we have a motion to speak the first reading? Motion by Mr. Coon, second by Mr. Reader. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. All right, consideration of grocery store investment incentives policy. Mr. Adams?
Mr. Chairman, this policy was authored by Dr. Rucker, Mr. Reader, and yourself, and offers credits against property tax liability to companies making investments that expand full-service grocery shopping in Newberry County. There are three tiers of the credit, triggered respectively by expenditures of $1 million, $2.5 million, and $4 million. Each category qualifies for a 60% reduction of property taxes due on all levies for 20 years, except that the credit is 100% for each of the first three years for an expenditure of at least $2.5 million and 100% for the first five years for an expenditure of at least $4 million. The policy was approved unanimously by the Economic Development Committee at its meeting on September 28th.
All right, heard the explanation by the county administrator. What's the wishes of council? Do we have any discussion?
This is of great interest to our community that we attempt to get new grocery stores here. And that's why the three council members are asking for this policy to be placed. And I would move for adoption.
Okay, we have a motion for adoption. Do we have a second? Any other continued discussion? Just want to say that in this investment incentive policy for grocery stores, this is something that really is not what county council should have to be doing. But when you have such a need within our county for something that we don't seem to be being successful with, we have to take extraordinary measures to try to do it. And again, I know Dr. Rucker has actually been to North Carolina to try to help get a grocery store coming, but really had no incentives to offer pretty much. I say no incentives, it was not at the time the liberty to. We were hoping that we would get a grocery store. We need some additional grocery stores. I think it's very obvious by the constituents within and out in the county. So, again, want to commend those who have worked on this very hard. Mr. Adams and the legal council just make sure it was airtight. Also, within all of that, council will still have the right to approve or reject, depending on what it is, whether we feel like it will truly benefit the citizens of Newberry County and benefit our community. So, again, I want to commend all those who had the legwork involved and the brain surgeon thinking about this. Dr. Rucker?
Mr. Chairman, I think we also should say that this will be a combination county-city effort. Although this is our ordinance, they will pass their own. But it will be a county-city endeavor.
Some team building at its best, and we appreciate that. And again, we're blessed to have that ability in a small town where we live currently. So, again, we've had a motion, we've had a second, all in favor of approving the resolution? It is unanimous. Thank you. Consideration of attendance paper for planning commission and BZA members. Mr. Adams?
Mr. Chairman, despite council's recent action reducing the size of the planning commission, which makes it easier to achieve a quorum, that entity has not been able to generate a quorum in four months now. The inability of the planning commission to consider business items impacts private sector and homeowner investment in Newberry County, making the commission members' attendance worthy of council's further consideration. Again, council had already shrunk the size of the planning commission so as to make a quorum require fewer people. But still, we are having a problem. Staff proposes that members of the planning commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals, which we call the BZA, receive a per-meeting attendance payment as a means of further encouraging regular participation. I should say that the BZA has been making quorums. I think they were close to not having one this past meeting, but they did make it. So, they are trying very hard. Payment for this kind of thing is not without precedent. We pay the Board of Assessment Appeals members each $60 per meeting, and we pay the chairman of that board $75 per meeting. And this same level of remuneration, the staff believes, would be fair compensation for the planning commission and the BZA. And the work that they do is, and the annual training, it's long, tedious, thankless. Mr. Scurry knows firsthand?
Yes.
I don't know if he's ever used those words, long, tedious, and thankless, because he's a gracious public servant. But it is quite a grind to be on the planning commission sometimes and on the BZA. The cost of this remained to the fiscal year, and the money we come from council's contingency line item is $9,990.
Okay, you heard the explanation from the county administrator. Comments? Mr. Chairman?
I'd like to make a motion that we pass this attendance paper.
I would second that motion.
All right, we've got a motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Consideration to improve Central SC Alliance Fiscal Year 2021 first and second quarter invoices in the amount of $36,000 recommended by the Economic Development Committee on 9/28/2020. What are the wishes of council?
I may do.
More information, do we supply that? Second by Mr. Reader. Any discussion? Yes, sir, Mr. King.
In the past, I have voted against funding this for many different reasons. But here recently, it has changed hands. There's going to be some, there are new people that's going to be operating and running. And I want to give them a chance to do what I think hadn't been done in the past. So, I'm willing to give this reading and to support this motion.
All right, with that being said, all in favor? It is unanimous. Appointments. Do we have any appointments tonight? Okay, committee reports, economic development. Mr. Rick Palmer?
Hey, we're just chairing members of the council. As always, I'm delighted to be here and give you a brief look on the last quarter of economic development activity. Your Economic Development Committee met on Monday and met for about an hour. And I'll brief you very quickly on this. We had a meeting from the new chairman of the Central SC Alliance. Mr. King, thank you so much for your comments. I was glad to hear that. Keller Kasam, who is a Calvin County native and a Dominion Energy executive, is the new chairman of the Central SC Alliance. So, as you know, Mike Breck passed away. So, we will have a new president eventually. Tracy McMillan is the interim. So, we have new leadership at the Central SC Alliance. And there seems to be a new focus and a new commitment towards serving the members. And we're really glad to see that. And so, we're excited about these changes, and we will work to maximize our membership in the Central SC Alliance. Project updates, project activity is still relatively slow. Most of that is due to COVID. There was a survey about two months ago that 61% of projects are moving forward. I imagine that's a little bit higher now, but it's definitely higher than the 45% of projects that were moving forward in May. So, things tend to be moving in the right direction. Department of Commerce says activity is similar to what it was in 2019, which was a bit of a damn year. So, and travel remains the primary limiting factor. Just an update on the project y'all passed last December. This is Newberry County's first solar farm. It is located here in Bush River Industrial Park or will be. That's about four miles north of the town Silver Street. It was delayed by COVID. And so, they were supposed to complete this last month originally, but now it'll be completed in March of 2021, according to the project supervisor. This is a 55-acre site, but really only about 30 acres will be covered by solar panels. And they should not be able to be seen by the road because of this buffer here. In terms of product development, Mr. Adams mentioned earlier the new, what we call a Newberry South industrial site. This is a great site in many respects. It's a good site. In terms of the overall topography, it crests in the right spot, right about here. It does have low lying and wet dunes, but they're off to the extreme. It's got all the infrastructure we need running along here. And so, this is a good site in many respects. It got a very, very positive valuation about two weeks ago when we had a meeting with Duke. Thank you for the ones of you who attended that meeting. Duke will help us with $10,000 in testing costs upfront. And I've been told there's a good chance for us to get $50,000 in utility tax credits from Duke next year. But the thing I'm excited most about Duke's partnership is that it has a global economic development recruiting program. So, Newberry County will have feelers all over the world in the very near future. We've also had this site selected by the Palmetto State's Palmetto Sites Program. That's similar to the old site certification program that the state had. But we're excited about that. We've got an evaluation meeting just next week. Here are a couple of, this is a bit washed out, but what this image shows, this is one possible layout, a single-user or a dual-user site. These are two 1 million square foot buildings. This is all just conceptual. And here's a more traditional industrial park-type layout. This is a million square feet. The smallest one here is about 150,000 square feet, and that's the smallest. But of course, there are a lot of options. Also, in terms of product development, decision has been made to traverse the creek in Mid-Carolina Commerce Park. Right now, this is what we have available. This site's filled, this site's filled, this site's filled. This site has our new spec building, and someone's actively looking at that site now. What traversing the creek will do is open up this side here to further development, and we're excited about that. It could bring in online about 200 acres. And this is a basic concept. What we would be, of course, we have existing roadway that goes here and here. And we just built about 200 feet of roadway to access the new spec building here. But we'll need this red portion, this yellow portion. And then the question becomes, how much of this green portion do we do? These are kind of mandatory to get across that creek and build market sites on the other side. In terms of prospect development, we've been marketing the spec building as hard as we can. MDT has done as well. We've had numerous meetings. I met with the project managers at Department of Commerce last month to make sure they're all up to speed on this site. We've done drone video of the site, and MDT recently ran a full-page ad in SC Biz Magazine. Again, travel continues to one marketing activity in terms of prospect. I was supposed to attend the auto conference, auto supplier conference in Wolfburg, Germany that's next week, but that has been downsized to a one-day conference. And it's just, I made a no-go decision last month just because of the travel situation. Department of Commerce staff has partly returned, but they're still, they still have a lot of travel restrictions. On the later point on grocery store incentives, I will say that I believe that this is good policy. And, Mr. Chairman, I believe you're right. Sometimes you need to do extraordinary things. And so, I think this is, and staff is working hard now. We're working hard to identify sites, identify prospects, try to get meetings with grocers. And more importantly, in my opinion, developers, because typically, these things are built by developers, and then developers go out and can install grocery stores. So, we're working on all of that. You've surely heard about Packaging Corporation of America being closed. It's about 80 employees out there. The good news is, it's a solid building. I'm touring it on Monday to get a better picture. I've been in touch with the HR person at corporate, the real estate person at corporate, and of course, a local contact here. But this is what is the exciting thing. This is a social media post we made. I went out and polled all the local industries to say, okay, guys, who's hiring? I didn't identify the company, but I said, company's closing. They've got about 80 employees. Who wants a shot at them? Our first social media post was two weeks ago, and I had 12 companies participate. Since then, I went back and I said, look, guys, this is getting, we had over 400 sheriffs. I said, this is going viral out there, so who else wants on board? We now have 20 local companies, 18 of them manufacturers, two staffing agencies, that are, have open jobs and are looking to hire people. So, we want to get this out there. If you see that post online, please share it with interested parties. And, you know, 80 employees, ideally, none of them will go unemployed. They'll walk out of ECAs, and they'll be walking into another facility. And that concludes my meeting, my presentation. I'd be glad to entertain any questions.
Any questions, comments?
I just appreciate the job that you're doing and the way that you're keeping Newberry on the map and that company that's closing, the way you went all out your way to make sure that those individuals will have opportunity to get positioned somewhere else. So, I appreciate the things that you do.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Public Safety and Courts Committee, Mr. Adams?
Chairman, I think James Wimmer's here. Is that you behind that mask?
You do.
And I want to say something about James Wimmer and Ben Chapman. You didn't think you'd be brought up in the same sentence. There was a time when, if you were in a room and there were men with guns and masks, you had stumbled into a bank robbery. But that's not what's going on here. The only item of business before the committee was the recommendation to full council of a resolution expressing council support for the Second Amendment to the United States Constitution. The committee approved that agenda, I mean, that motion unanimously, and the resolution will be on the October 21st council agenda.
Okay, thank you. All right, Executive Session, 30-4-70, South Carolina Code of Laws as amended 1976, Discussion of Negotiations Inc. to Propose Contractual Arrangements in Proposed Sell or Purchase a Property in Recede of Legal Advice Where the Legal Advice Relates to the Pending Threaten or Potential Claim or Other Matters Covered by the Attorney-client Privilege, Settlement of Legal Claims, or the Position of the Public Agency in Other Adversary Situations Involving the assertion against the agency of a claim. Mr. Adams?
Mr. Chairman, the purpose of the Executive Session will be to make council aware of a private party's interest in purchasing property owned by selling price, and at this stage in negotiations, that confidentiality is protected.
All right. Do we have a motion to go into executive session? Motion by Dr. Ruck, second by Mr. Reader. Any discussion, all in favor, we are, will be going into executive session. We shall return.
We're back. Mr. Adams, would you like to report out of executive session?
Mr. Chairman, the council met an executive session for the stated purpose and took no action in the executive session.
All right, public comments. Mr. Thomas White, you have the mic if you would like it, my friend.
Mr. Chairman, this is revisiting an issue that we brought forth before the committee a couple of weeks ago, or last month rather, of Charlie Freeway being in such poor shape, we want the county to take over and take over maintenance of it. Charlie Free himself is in no condition, nor does he have a desire in which to take care of the road anymore. I brought with me tonight some pictures and a in-depth petition of both renters and owners of properties along Charlie Freeway. If you would like a copy of them, sir. That's all I have.
You have the pictures. If you want to just put them down there and pass them, let them pass down will be great.
All right.
Thomas. And if you've got the petition, if you would just give it to Debbie or Wayne, we'll see what else we need or if anything else is needed.
Can we refresh us a bit?
Yes, this is, Charlie Freeway is in Palmaria.
I remember that.
Right where they just built the new, New Dollar General.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, it's the next dirt road. It's hard telling the pictures. We were in a vehicle. It's hard to take a picture of a pothole. It's hard to take a picture of churning hanging over, literally hitting the windshield of your vehicle as you're trying to pass through the road there.
Is that a privately owned road?
I'm sorry?
Is that a privately owned road?
Yes, it is. Of course, you can imagine the potholes turn the ponds when it rains. We've got, we've got some, some craters that are probably close to 10 inches deep.
How long, how long is that road?
The length of the road is just right around four tenths of a mile. As a matter of fact, it is right around four, right around five tenths of a mile, I'm sorry. Five tenths of a mile.
I think when I came in there, here, I don't know, within the past month, I think it's 4.7 tenths is what I think it.
That might be with the logistics how it is.
Thank you for telling us that.
I think we're going to take this up at the Public Works and Planning Committee meeting on the 19th.
Part of these potholes are RJ's fault. It's because he is in such a hurry to get home to see his wife in the afternoon. He keeps knocking the water and mud out of the holes and that's caused a lot of the problems. Okay, RJ, I think you're up next, my friend.
Charlie Freeway. And just back to my neighbor, I just want to bring up again, the post office won't deliver any packages. And our small business owners here in Newbury, it's on 3 O N Street. And any packages that won't fit the mailbox, they won't deliver. The post office in Palmaria is only open minimal hours on Saturday. I work all the way to the front, so it's difficult. Also, I have kids, I have to walk all the way back to the paved road to get on the school bus. It's unpassable when it rains. I mean, it's just difficult for all of us. Just looking for any help we can and appreciate anything you guys could do for us.
Did you get signatures from majority or the?
We have, I have, I don't get the original copy of either, if it matters. We have every signature for every landowner or renter on the, on the road besides Mr. Charlie.
RJ, I forgot to say the other part of it, the other part of mud is not done by your wife being so happy to leave you and get out of there, so. Thank y'all for your persistence and coming back on this. Mr. Adams, I think you, I heard you say it was probably taken up at the Public Works and Planning Committee.
Yeah, we'll talk about it with the committee on the 19th at 7:00 P.M. It'll be in the room down the hall. What I do know so far is that the engineering cost of this is going to be considerable. And what we do with these roads is if the people who live there own property are amenable, we put them in a special tax district and we assess a certain amount for each parcel. We have to talk about what it's going to be in this case. I think it's, it looks like it's very flat without much drainage. So it's going to hold water. It's going to be a difficult, it's going to be a difficult thing to, to deal with. But there's some engineering costs upfront that have to be paid and we're going to have to talk about that. Because I think it's, I want to say it's around $10,000. $54,000, not around $10,000. So we got some obstacles, but we can begin to talk about it on the 19th at 7:00 P.M.
That's, that's just the initial cost, correct?
That's just to design and fix. Yeah, not to actually fix it. And we're not talking about paving. We don't pave these roads.
No. I moved to this country for a reason. I want to have a road. I just would like them in shape.
Okay. Well, we'll see what we can do. See what we can come up with.
All right. With that being said, thank you for your comments. Let's see, moving to comments requests from council members. Well, hold on. I think I flipped the page. I think we got Mr. Adams first. Comments and requests from the county administrator.
I don't have any, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Scurry.
I don't have any, Charlie.
Dr. Rocker.
Neither do I.
Reader.
I don't have anything.
Mr. Coon.
Yes, sir. I'd like for us to keep Mayor's Elizabeth Dawkins-Adams family in our prayers and thoughts. She passed away on October the 5th. She was retired from the Newbury County Auditor's Office where she had worked for many years.
Thank you. Wayne, I know we addressed the attendance at committee meetings because we had a committee appointment a while ago. We have in the past, I think, got a list of our appointees and how many meetings they have attended and how many they missed or whatever.
If we don't, we can get that.
I would almost like to see us all have that. And if we got people that are not attending, we need to address it. And again, I, I don't begrudge these people because they are in most cases doing it for absolutely nothing just for the service to our community. But if they're not going to be able to make it, we need to find somebody because it's awfully embarrassing to have citizens come out to meetings with anticipation that they're going to have a meeting and then not have it. It's, it's, again, and I don't point fingers at anybody. I'm just saying, I'd like to just, as council members, we need to take responsibility for the people that we have appointed attending meetings. And I'd just like to see that if it's possible that we could get kind of a running data list of who we got that's appointed and who's not attending. All right, future meetings, Public Works and Planning Committee on October the 19th, County Council on October the 21st, and then another county council meeting on October the 4th. Y'all, this year's almost over with again. It just seems all. I mean, November 4th, that's, yeah. I did say October 4th. November 4th, we're not backing up. That being said, do we have a motion to adjourn?